We present this graph every year just to see and present to you how the general fund reserve and assigned fund balance increase from year to year. So with, as previously mentioned, there is a 1.5 million in the general fund balance, which mostly went to the general fund reserve and an assigned fund balance. So from 2017 balance of 7.1 million, as of the end of the fiscal year 2018, you now have approximately 8.5 million in total of general fund reserve and assigned fund balance. That actually is composed of, let me check, I think it's 5.5 million in an assigned fund balance and 2 million in the city's provision for Budget Stabilization Fund. Before I go to the required communication, I would just like to quickly touch on the status of the prior year's recommendations that we presented to you. Last year, we presented to you seven comments and recommendations, and that is for improvement of internal control and financial reporting for the city. The first one is to develop and implement monthly year-end closing and reporting process. The implementation of that recommendation is actually in process. The finance department has exerted a lot of efforts and made some improvements in terms of implementing a timely year-end closing process. However, the department is still in the process of documenting those processes, including checklist, that would guide them for a more efficient closing procedure. Also, we have recommended that the city update the accounting policies and procedures manual, update credit card policy, improve controls over receipts, and those are all implemented during the fiscal year. We also have recommended for the city to develop and implement control policies over off-site collections. Those were implemented as well during the year with the implementation of the new accounting system. Some of these recommendations were addressed by using and implementing part of those accounting system. Establish procedures for booking fees is the sixth item that actually was implemented as well with the retention of a collection agency to handle that process and improve controls over manual checks. That recommendation was implemented as well. The last part of our presentation is the required communication to the city council members, the governing board of the city. Again, I would like to reiterate that management has the primary responsibility over the city's financial statements. So all the adoption of the accounting principles, their application and consistency of their applications are also the responsibility of management. Our responsibility is to render an opinion on those. Had there been any consultations made by management? We call this opinion shopping. We are required by the standards to report those to you, but we are not aware of any such consultations. Difficulties with management and any disagreements with management that we encountered during the course of the audit, had there been those instances, we are required to report those to you as well. But we are happy to report that we did not encounter any difficulties or disagreements. Significant accounting policies implemented by management are considered appropriate and consistently applied based on the results of the procedures that we have performed. There were no controversial issues for which there is lack of authoritative guidance. The city, as mentioned, implemented GASP 75, and those are in compliance with the required standards. During the course of our audit, there may be instances where the auditors will propose adjustments to correct certain balances and to make sure that the financial statements are not materially misstated. We have discussed those adjustments with management, and they agreed and recorded those proposed adjustments. We are not aware of any conditions for retention, and this is very important because Vasquez, as your independent auditors, are required to maintain its independence, especially even from the beginning up to the start of the engagement. So no significant issues were discussed or subject to correspondence with management that were considered conditions for retention. Again, this is a financial uncompliance audit that we have conducted. This is not a fraud audit. So the objective of our audit did not include finding any irregularities or fraud or illegal acts within the organization. However, as required by the professional standards, we are required to perform inquiries from management and some members of the city council members to ask about any fraud risk factors that we have to consider in the performance of our audit. And based on the results of those procedures, we noted no irregularities, fraud, or illegal acts during the performance of those procedures. When we performed the audit, we relied so much on the information provided to us by management, and that is why management is required to sign a management representation letter affirming that those information that they provided to us are correct. And we are, would like to report that management of the city signed a copy of the management representation letter before we finalize this report and provide them to you. There are a few, a couple of slides more, and these are all regarding new accounting pronouncements which will affect the city's financial statements in next year or in the future years. We are providing them for your information only, but we will not discuss this at this point. We actually conduct training wherein we invite some members of your finance team to attend so they can be updated with this new accounting standards as well. That concludes my presentation of the results of the audit. If you have any questions, we'll be happy to.
All right, council members, at this point have any questions? If not, we'll go ahead and receive and file. Thank you very much. Excellent, and I appreciate the time and effort that's been placed into this auditing as well. Thank you very much. All right, so at this point, we're going to go ahead and go into the public communication. Anyone wishing to speak, you have approximately three minutes.
Good evening.
Hello, City Council, residents of Baldwin Park. I can't believe Chief, I should say Trump, as mayor is, here you guys fired Celcedo, and now you want to bring him back. Mayor, what'd you do? You tell him, if you quit suing us, I'll make sure you become chief of police. What the heck are you running? You people look like dictators. You're not, you don't, you're not city council people. You're a dictator. The rest of you, I don't know what the heck you do here, but I'll tell you one thing, don't seem like you're doing everything legitimate. It seems to me that you people don't care, and I'll say it till the day I die, about 80,000 or so residents of Baldwin Park. All you care about is what benefits you guys, you ladies, you people up here. You know, the lawyer, I think he works for the mayor. Trump, good example. One, two, one, two. You people are supposed to work for the 80-some-thousand residents of Baldwin Park. You don't do that. You don't do that, mayor. You're like Trump. You work for individual people that benefit you. Plain English, you're a dictator. Yeah, you can look right at me, right here. I'm right here. Three minutes, you can see me. Then next time, three more minutes. Don't you people ever get tired of being criticized? The only people that like you people are the people that vote you in, because those people that didn't vote for you, we don't like you, and we'll tell you from heaven knows long, you people got to quit working for yourself and work for all of us 80,000-some people. I know you're figuring out, what the hell is he talking about? The mayor knows, the lawyer knows, and all of you. So what's happening to this city? You're making money, taking it from all of us 80,000 people, but that's about it. So I think this new police chief you want, because if the rest of the people vote him in, that's what they want too. This guy couldn't keep his promotion, and you want to bring him to the city of Baldwin Park? What do you do? Take all the has-beens around the world? Because that's what you seem to be doing. If somebody fails, that's the guy you're going to go pick. You don't care. I can guarantee you that in this police department of this city, there is one person in there that's more qualified than that reject you want to bring here. But you deserve it, mayor, because he's probably talking to you day in and day out, saying, oh, you tell me to do something, I'll do it, no matter if it's right or wrong. He helped get rid of the police department helicopter.
All right, thank you very much. Appreciate that. Okay, next person to come up. Thank you very much.
I noticed that you never said anything about that. Yeah, I know, I heard you. I hear you every three minutes that I talk.
Time is up. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. All right, we'll move on with public communication. Thank you. Good evening.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Erwenda Vessup. I am a product of B-Pace, and it's very interesting that I would come back for the Education Week, celebration of Education Week.
Thank you.
And I so clearly remember being honored as one of the contestants and award winners for the essay contest. So as a product, I wanted to come back and say thank you all. I will be graduating with my master's in cultural psychology, May the 11th. Thank God. Also, I will be an advocate in counseling, and I look forward also to go on to obtain my doctorate as well. One of the awesome things, as a result of the matriculation process, I was able to write a book, one of three, and also I'm hoping that it will also be included in the libraries. It is up for sale for only $25, so I'm hoping that I will also obtain your support as well.
Absolutely.
Thank you once again. I'm so thankful for Denise and Dr. Kira and all of you, mayor.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Denise, can we follow up on where we could obtain a copy of the book? Okay? All right. Thank you very much. Yes, good evening.
Good evening, mayor, city council of Baldwin Park. My name is Giselle Suriel, and I'm here on behalf of Senator Susan Rubio. First things first, I just want to say thank you and how excited we are to be partnering with the city of Baldwin Park on Wings. Yes, women inspiring girls, women inspiring the next generation of sisterhood. We are so looking forward to hosting this. Thank you so much for being the city that we're starting in as we are planning on taking it around the district. And I just wanted to, you know, let the community know that we are, we're up and running. We'd love to have your young girls between the ages of 14 and 18 RSVP. It's going to be a great day. It's going to be, there's going to be financial literacy, there's going to be social media training, there's going to be, you know, workshops on how to have healthy and safe relationships, as well as an etiquette course. So I know all of us can learn how to use a few of those forks, right?
That's right.
So we'd love to encourage you all to share that with your community, with the community, and just encourage you all to, I know, I've been working with Manny as well as Vanessa in your Parks Department, they've been so great as far as getting the word out, and just if we could, you know, if there's any young girls that you think could benefit from this, please send them our way. Please send them to the link. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Thank you for being here.
Can you remind us of the date, please?
Yes, okay, so I'm also going to have some of the flyers in the back. March 23rd, Saturday, March 23rd. This is going to be from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m.
Where's the location?
It's at your community center.
Oh, thank you.
Yes, and then, and I believe it is up on the website, the city circulating flyers, I believe it's been connected, but if, to the superintendent, but if you can continue to, you know, pull any, your nieces, your grandkids, I don't know, just please, if you could just let them all know, we'd love to have them attend, okay?
Thank you, Giselle.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. All right, good evening.
Good evening, mayor and city council members. My name is Julie McCaslin. I'm the children and teen librarian at the Baldwin Park Library. I came tonight to talk about a special, a few special programs we're having this month at the library. This Saturday, the 9th, from 2:00 to 3:00 p.m., we're having pet first aid and CPR. So you can come and learn about how to care for your pet in case of emergency, and what to put in a pet first aid kit, and learn how to use it, and how to help when your pet is bleeding or choking. So I think a lot of us have pets, so that's a great program. I also want to tell you about, we have free tax prep assistance at the library. We had one last Saturday, and we have one more on March 23rd from 10:00 a.m. in the morning till 4:00 p.m. in the afternoon. We have the VITA program, volunteers that come and help people do their taxes for free. So great, great program. And the one dear to my heart is our bully prevention workshops. They are going to be on March 19th. We have one for the kids from 3:30 to 4:30, and they're going to talk to the kids about how to recognize bullying behaviors, how to report and seek help. And at the same time, we're going to have one for the parents or caregivers in a different part of the library to show them how to learn to recognize the warning signs and how to find resources and intervene for their children. And then after that, we're going to have personal advocacy and leadership skills for the children from 4:30 to 5:30. So I think in this day and time, that is a very important program for kids and parents to attend, is for ages, kids ages 8 to 13. So I put flyers in the back, our calendar, so we have lots going on at the library, so come by and see us.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Thank you. All right, move on with public communication. Good evening.
Good afternoon, mayor and the city council managers and chief of police. I know you guys got a lot on your agenda. I'm coming on old business. Now, we did talk about, a little bit about that homeless shelter. You know, I've tried to call the city manager's office, get a little input, find out a little recon on it, and see how us as the carpenters, as I gave the officer the last time I was here, these guys got to put in community hours. It's part of our program that we implemented into our carpenters' union. As you guys know, we're the oldest union in the United States. We do a lot of buildings that stay up forever until they get knocked down, and you know, I just want to share a number with you guys, so when you guys do outreach, when we do need a community project, and you guys got to get some reinforcements to jump on it, clean up, painting, I know there's certain divisions, but there is a number that someone could hopefully call, and I'm going to give you guys a number over, over, over this meeting that we're having. His name is Ted Jimenez, and that's our political action reach out. So if you guys need something, please reach out to Ted Jimenez. You know, I come here trying to advocate and see what we do to homeless. I know it's a teeter-totter issue, you know, police, people, but if they have kids, that's who we want to really help out, you know? Get them some fresh clothes, shower, get them, get them a job fair going. I mean, we get, there's so much we could do. You got in and out. I'm sure we reached out to them, little donation here and there for tables, chairs. I mean, you know, it's putting people together and the right pieces together. It's not just about giving you guys a gold shovel, a hard hat, and then you guys go, okay, we're going to break ground. It's about hands on, boots on the ground, let's get it done, because they get teeter-totter, back and forth, back and forth, but who's actually going to sweat and use their hands? You know, I mean, you guys are put up there to serve the public. We have a problem, little kids don't eat oatmeal in the morning, you know, they're done going to school, you know, then, then that triggers in the future, go to the Twin Towers. You ain't going to get out of there once you go in there, you know, you go through Twin Towers. I built it. I already know how it's going to go for them. And the odds are against them when you're poor, you're Latino, your parents are on drugs, and your little kid's saying mommy, mommy, and then she's smoking a crack pipe. You guys got to, we got to jump on this. I mean, please, I'm reaching out. I got 21 seconds. Wish you guys all a good night. It hurts me to see homeless people pushing a shopping cart. Can't help 100 of them, but we do one. You guys sleep better tonight, cashing your check.
Thank you very much. Okay, move on with public communication. Good evening.
Good evening, mayor. Council members, city staff, community of Baldwin Park. My name is Daniel Labanos. I'm your city ambassador for One Legacy Donate Life. It's been another exciting year for the transplant community with outstanding record-breaking results for the 2018, according to preliminary data from UNOS, United Network for Organ Sharing. There were 36,527 organ transplants performed in the United States, setting another annual record for the sixth straight year. There were more than 10,700 deceased donors who gave the gift of life for the eighth consecutive year, another record. Also, nearly 6,900 living donor transplants were performed, which is total being the highest since 2005. Not to be outdone, the One Legacy service area also had 515 deceased donors who gave the gift of life and 4,165 organ transplants within our seven counties. Now, there is still nearly 114,000 patients, 21,000 in the state of California alone, waiting for the gift of life. Sadly, we lose about 20 patients daily waiting for the gift of life, and every 10 minutes, someone is added to this list. Remember, one person can save the lives of eight people through organ donation and enhance the lives of 75 people or more with cornea and tissue donation. Currently, with the DMV's help, together we have registered over 15 million future donors, and thank you for registering, becoming an organ donor. Our 2019 Donate Life Rose Float Rhythm of the Heart won the judges' trophy award for Outstanding Float Design and Dramatic Impact. The 131st tournament of Rose's theme will be "The Power of Hope." Since April is Donor Awareness Month, One Legacy is asking our cities to proclaim April as DMV Donate Life California Month with a city proclamation for the importance of organ, eye, and tissue donation. We thank you for your continued support. Donate Life 17th Annual Run Walk is on April 27, 2019, taking place on the campus of Cal State University, Fullerton. The mayor of Fullerton sends out his invitation to all civic leaders to participate in the event, in the mayorathon challenge. Over the years, our event has attracted more than 12,000 participants. April 20th is our deadline for city proclamations, and all proclamations will be on display at our Run Walk. I am a liver transplant recipient who received my gift of life on December 27, 2003, the greatest gift I ever received from a stranger. Thank you, Mayor Lozano, mayor of town, council members, city staff, and the community of Baldwin Park for giving me this opportunity to announce what One Legacy's mission is: saving and healing lives through organ, eye, and tissue donation comforts the families we serve and inspires our communities to donate life. Thank you and have a great evening.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. All right. Move on with public communication. Anyone wishing to speak? Oh, there's Terry Muse.
City Mayor, city council members, and community of Baldwin Park, Terry Muse, Waste Management. I'm here to invite everybody to a public tour of our Azusa Materials Recycling Facility on April 30th from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon. It's in honor of Earth Day. We have found that the best way for people to learn how to recycle is to actually see the recycling center in action. We want you to see what happens to recyclables after you put them in that gray cart, and we take it to the recycling facility, so you can learn what goes in there and what doesn't. Sadly, one in four items that people put in the recycle bin is trash. It's not recycling. So we're trying to really help educate the community on what is recycling so we can do a better job. I have flyers, I'm not sure, I know I sent it to, to the Parks Recreation to put on the website, I'm not sure if it's up yet, but I have a flyer, and I'll leave flyers also that we could put out maybe at the counter or something there at the park to just, we really want to try and get as many residents and business owners out there. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Move on with the public communication. Good evening.
I need a translator. I want to thank Mr. Garcia, Mr. Gutierrez, beautiful job you did. Huh? You're doing strange. No, I'll do it, okay? I just want to recognize you. Okay. One of the las cosas que hemos mirado en la comunidad ahorita es que está pasando lo mismo que pasó años pasados.
One of the things that's occurring in our city is something that's been, that happened a few years ago.
Bingo. Las cosas que la comunidad no sé cómo agarraron los votos o qué es lo que pasó. Ahorita estamos investigando todos los votos que votaron en noviembre.
They're currently investigating all the votes that meant on the November 2018 ballot?
El poder que le están dando al mayor, él se cree como que si fuera arriba de la comunidad.
He says the mayor believes he's above the community and is speaking about the power in place.
Una de las cosas que prometieron unos candidatos.
One of the things the candidates promised?
Que iban a trabajar con la comunidad, y lo que hemos mirado no se está pasando eso. Una de las cosas que estamos investigando también, duré meses sin venir al ciricanto.
So he's saying that the candidates promised to help the community, and that's not what's happening, and that's why the ballots or the ballot counts are being investigated, the votes, I'm sorry, and...
It's okay.
I missed it.
Una de las cosas que miramos y yo lo que salió ahora, el mayor que trae a su amigo para atrás para ser jefe de policía, y eso es una de las cosas que en cuanto salió, la gente me comenzó a hablar.
So he's saying that people have contacted him due to the rumor that the police chief, the mayor's friend, a previous police chief is coming in again?
Y esa es una de las cosas que queremos mirar, que sea legalmente votado, no, no más porque es mi amigo, va a ser el jefe de policía. Tenemos policías aquí que tienen mejor, oh, knowledge.
We want to make sure that the police chief that comes in is legally voted, and he believes that there may be talent here within the Baldwin Park Police Department who could fulfill that position.
Tenemos varios representantes de la comunidad, de los policías, que tienen master's degrees.
There's various police department staff who have master degrees.
Y esa es una de las cosas que queremos mirar, legalmente, que sea votado, no, no más porque es mi amigo, lo voy a traer para atrás. Eso es su, como se dice, una cosa que la comunidad no quiere, quiere mirar que sea todo parejo.
He wants to make sure that the person who comes in is legally voted, and not just because they're someone's friends, and that the community wants to also see that they're legitimately brought in.
La policía que tenemos aquí es muy fuerte, mucha de la gente tiene mucho respeto a la policía de aquí. El jefe que estaba aquí, el jefe de policía, el Taylor, se fue, se fue, ¿verdad? Pero todos los demás, los oficiales, son muy buenos con la comunidad, ellos persiguen toda la ley.
The current staff is great. They have a great force, and although the chief of police, Taylor, departed, he still believes that they have a great force within the Baldwin Park Police Department.
Y es todo por ahorita, pero para la otra vamos, ya estamos contando los votos ahí después.
So he referred back to recounting the votes for the November 28 election.
All right, thank you very much. Appreciate that. Move on with public communication. Okay, seeing no interest in the public communication, at this point, I'm going to go ahead and go over to the consent counters. So we have items one, two, actually 11, oh, hold on, hold on, one moment, to 12, excuse me. Council members wishing to pull any item? If none at this point, I will go ahead and make a motion to pass the consent counters' items one through 12. That is my motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by council member Paul Hernandez. Any objections? Seeing none, so move. All right, so the next, the item that we have here is the public hearing, which is the Public Hearing Regarding Fiscal Year 2019-2020 Community Development Block Grant and the Home Investment Partnership Fund, Home Annual Action Plan. Staff, so at this point, do we have Susie Rellis, or?
Actually, mayor, we're going to just open that hearing and then hold it over.
You want to hold over it? We're going to hold over it. All right, so at this point, I'll make a motion to hold over the public, public hearing for the community block grant. That is my motion.
Second.
Any objections? Seeing none, so move. I request to the item 14, a request to the city council and the planning commission I request to the item 14, a request to the City Council and the Planning Commission on the amendment to the Development Agreement 18-03, to grant the manufacturing license in order to repackage products for cultivators and manufacturers of cannabis within the IC Industrial Commercial Zone pursuant to ordinance 1408, location 4150, Puente Avenue. At this point, I'm gonna request we move this over. Can I go ahead and make a motion to move this over to the following meeting?
Second.
Any objections? See none, so move. All right, so at this point, we're gonna go over...
I'm sorry, Mayor, the item 13, I understand it has to, has to be opened and then continued.
All right, all right, so at this point, I will open up the public here for, public hearing regarding the fiscal year 2019-2020 Community Development Block Grant, so at this point, I will open up the, the, so at this point, the participants can make their...
Just open it up and continue it to the next meeting, and then they could speak at the next meeting.
All right, so at this point, we'll go ahead, I'll open it, I'll, I'll go ahead, and then we're gonna leave it open for the following meeting, is that correct?
Yes.
All right, so at this point, I will go ahead and leave this open for the following meeting, and I'll go ahead and make a motion to continue the public hearing for the following week. Okay? That is my motion. Is there a second? Any objections? See none, so move. Yes, how did I do that? All right, let me open up the essay one, the successor, thank you, Alejandra, Council Member, successor agency to dissolve the Community Development Commission of the City of Baldwin Park's Treasury Report. So at this point, I'll go ahead and make a motion, staff recommend that council receive and file the treasurer's report, that is my motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Member Paul Hernandez, any objections? See none, so move. All right, so we'll go over to the reports of officers, am I correct?
Yes, Mayor, in this, first, item 15, you heard the presentation from the auditor, so we would just ask for a motion to approve.
Yes, okay, so at this point, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the auditor's report for fiscal year 2017-18, that's my motion.
Second.
Second by Council Member Paul Hernandez, any objections? See none, so move. All right, we'll go over to item 16, which is the Approve and Adopt Resolution Number 2019-02, entitled A Resolution of City Council of the City of Baldwin Park. Yeah, let's go ahead, yeah, I'll motion to move this over to the following meeting at the, actually, you wanna go ahead and motion, Council Member Alejandra, okay, her motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Member Hernandez, at this point, any objections? See none, so move. All right, so at this point, we're gonna go over to request by, request by Council Member Paul Hernandez for City Council Discussion and Direction to the staff following. At this point, Mr. Hernandez, sir.
Thank you very much. This is an item that's dear to, dear to my heart, and also for those in the community. As I mentioned earlier, there are things that certainly we can improve in our community. This is something that I like, if we can get a report back with options, to be able to update and to enhance the city's operational plan. This is important for, for various aspects. This essentially dictates and outlines the way the response the city would, would be handling a crisis or an emergency, but it also provides resources and availability of information to our residents, because not only do we have a responsibility from the public, there's also, and I say public, public sector, there's also a responsibility from the private, from our residents and from the private sector. So I'll let, you know, our chief and our city manager, and also the rest of our staff to, you know, be able to participate in this process, because it is going to be required, you know, for everyone to have a, have a hand and a, a finger in each of these items, so.
And let me just add, I'm glad that's placed on there, I know that, talked to before, and I think it's important for us to plan for the future and potential emergency, and I think that some of the resources, some of these organizations that could come, at least assist us and guide us in putting an actual plan, strategic plan together, we need it, and have access for quite some time, so thank you, Council Member Paul Hernandez. So at this point, that'll come back, of course, it's gonna take time, so maybe we'll have, maybe a study session dedicated to that with the group, is that possible?
That's possible, but let's see what the staff brings back before we go any further.
All right, okay, so at this point, yes, yes, absolutely.
I would like to request a monthly report on cannabis, on what the payments are looking like, what's coming in, what's not coming in, and how are they doing with compliance, where we're at, and who's in compliance and all of that. If we can have that on a monthly basis, we can keep up with it, please.
All righty, okay, at this point, I'd like to also, before we close, the Job Fair being hosted 2019 at the Esther Snyder Community Center, which is Thursday, March 21st, so from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM, open to the public, of course, they'll assist you with resume, direct and hiring, and so on and so forth, so I think it's, it's an opportunity, let's make sure we place that on the website if we can.
One more thing, Mayor, I almost forgot. Baldwin Park Unified School District had a showcase this last weekend, although it was raining, they did a wonderful showcase, showing everything the district has to offer, everything the students are learning. Thanks to Baldwin Park Rec, they did an amazing job. It was originally scheduled to be outside, as you know, it was pouring, they brought everything indoors. It is very important to know what the district is doing with our students, they're moving ahead, they have robotics programs at elementary level, so I invite you to look into what the district's doing, they really are moving forward, so congratulations to them, they did a wonderful job.
Absolutely, thank you, thank you very much, and Paul Hernandez and I attended the, you were there as well, Alejandra, I went up to the Lions Club to see the induction of the Leals all from Cervista High School, so I wanna thank them and recognize them. Individually, actually, let's bring them here, and let's not forget, we wanna make sure that we also bring the soccer team, which won the CIF and State from Cervista High School. I did say that the council would support them and place them in one of the digital billboards, so we could be able to showcase these young individuals. Let's see if we could fit them in here for the following city council meeting.
And just to be prepared, I believe they're gonna be asking for donations for their rings, because they won CIF and State, and they're very expensive, and they definitely deserve it, it was very exciting to hear that Cervista won the state championship. So yes, let's recognize them, I also want to bring up, and we'll put that together too, the wrestling team from Cervista, took league champs, undefeated league champs, we had two girls go to masters. One of the girls, she's a freshman, I don't have her name in front of me, so I would like to have them recognized. Again, Baldwin Park School District is doing a lot academically with sports, they're really behind our students, so let's support them and bring them up here.
Awesome, thank you. Now, before we end, I just wanna sing happy birthday to Gina Yala, who I think just turned thirty-six or thirty-seven, one of the two.
Twenty-one, twenty-one.
She's been teaching at one elementary school for twenty-six years, so, ready? One, two, three. Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Bala. Happy birthday to you.
All right, she's gonna treat us in and out. All right, so at this point, see no further interest, I now declare the, the city council will adjourn, and that's my motion, is there a second? Second by Council Member Alejandra Avila, at this point, good evening, viva Baldwin Park.
You think that church opens?